Good day, Ellen. Good, good. All right. We'll call. Apparently, it's the women's night. Thank you, Dr. Gaines, for sitting with us. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Moving on to communications, recognition of our students, staff, and community volunteers. We have Hagaman here. Excellent.
How are all you guys doing this evening?
Good, how are you?
Or ladies, I should say. In addition to the one up there.
I heard you say something about a two-hour presentation.
Well, I think I can cut it down to about an hour and 45 minutes if that's necessary.
Did Dr. Bressler help with this?
Yeah, he did. He's the one who told me it wasn't long enough.
We were wondering about you. We were worried about you.
Not worried enough that we didn't start.
Right, we went ahead and started.
Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm here to recognize some staff members who, here at Hagaman Elementary, have basically gone above and beyond for the sake of our students and helping to make sure that we're addressing each and every student's need in our building. And I just wanted to highlight that a little bit, and I promise it's not going to be two hours.
I was just kidding.
Is that working up there? There we go. So then the next one? Okay, so the individuals that I want to introduce to you today are Stephanie Bailey, Paula Kennedy, and Devon Dryco. Unfortunately, Julie Dooley and Carrie Kendrick couldn't be with us. They had some other things going on this evening, but they're also very instrumental in what I'm going to talk to you about this evening. A little while ago, well now years ago, but it doesn't seem like that long, we created a leadership team under the auspice of Comprehensive Integrated Three-Tierred Systems. And what that is, is that's looking and putting systems together so that we can dial down to each and every individual student related to academic, social, and emotional needs. All right? So it's a three-tiered system. You have your first tier, which is what everybody gets. You have your second tiers, where we begin to notice there may be some difficulties or issues, and then we have a third tier for our most significant needs. This effort began when Julie Dooley and I attended a workshop that was given by Dr. Kathy Lane of Kansas University back in 216. We went there after school for a two-hour seminar. We looked at each other and went, "We need some more of this candy." So I got ahold of Dr. Jeff Bressler, and I said, "Jeff, this is something we'd like to get involved in, but we're going to need your support." He said, "Absolutely. Make it happen." So these ladies here are part of a small group of a much larger committee that has worked on all of the action items over the last two and a half years to actually complete the work that a committee is suggesting that we do. Okay? So what are some things that they've done? These individuals facilitated all of the committee discussions. When we go off-campus and we're working with Dr. Lane and her staff, they're the ones facilitating discussions with a larger committee to make sure that we're focused on the things that we need to be focused on and we're getting work done while we're there. Then they come back to the building for monthly committee meetings, and they facilitate those discussions, and they've been doing that for the past two years. The small group has analyzed all of the data that comes in. They've taken that upon themselves and used that data to determine plans, once again, in academic, social, emotional needs of our kids. They're the ones that helped, and we're very instrumental in developing the three-tiered interventions that we have to support our students' needs. They've also developed all the training to increase our staff capacity in the implementation of all the support strategies that we've developed or we're using. They've also implemented the training themselves, and that's important because when you're standing up in front of your peers and asking them and training them to do things that are difficult, your peer recommending that, it's important because, A, that's not easy to do, but it also leads credence to what's being asked. After they do these trainings, they go back. They've gathered further feedback to make sure, are there any next steps in training? They've also gone forth and created all the forms for communication as well as to make sure that our processes are accurate and done with fidelity. They were the key staff who helped us transition to a new leadership committee structure this year. When first introduced, there was a lot of kickback on that and a lot of questions, and it was their answers, their support of it, and helping of people to understand why we needed it that helped that move forward, and it's never easy changing the leadership structure of a building. During this year, they determined that in addition to all the monthly meetings and other committee work that they do, because this isn't the only committee they serve on, they're like, "Scott, if we're going to get this done for next year in our second year of implementation where we're improving things, we're going to have to get together every week to make this happen." So in addition to all of the other committee work that they do, they themselves volunteered to meet every week to make sure that we get this done and continue those action items. And then the group's been meeting over the summer to assure that the training process is in place to begin the year and we're ready to go. So you can tell they've done a lot of work. I feel that it needs to be recognized. They are special individuals, and they are helping to make Hagaman a great place for kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you do. Okay.
Do you want to see this?
Open period of patron comments. We don't have any on the first one. Standing committee reports. Has anybody had?
No.
Committee?
Policy.
Policy?
Committee met last week, the 11th. I don't know, was that last week?
Week and a half.
They're all merging together.
I know.
And we had, all right, we're not talking about that. Are you going to bring that up as a topic for us to discuss, the one policy?
No.
At KC?
No, not tonight.
So at any rate, we had a lot of discussion with regard to some policies that Mr. Catalana has put forward, and we had additional conversation with regard to the cum laude system or the ranking system, and it really revolved a lot around implementation. There was great discussion with regard to now, or excuse me, next year, so '19 or '20. We had educational professionals on the policy committee provide feedback on their opinion with regard to timing and need to move forward. In general, I would say that I think that everybody is in favor of moving forward with the system. The timing piece still continues to be a bit of a sticking point. The group, I feel like, asked a number of questions of those that were there. Principal Kellerman was there, providing the feedback, and again, you know, some of the questions were, are there negatives?
My microphone, it fell off.
Oh, thanks. I think you can probably still hear me, but were there negatives to moving now or moving in 2019 or waiting to 2020? And I've asked that question, I feel like, in so many different ways. I can't ask it any other way now, and I keep getting the same answer from the educational professionals that, no, there's really nothing that has impaired our ability to move forward in 2019, and it does not negatively impact our students. However, the rest of our conversation was with regard to the feedback that we continue to receive, that it will impair, and we should wait. And a lot of it comes around to the scheduling piece and whether or not students have time to adjust their schedules, so juniors have time to adjust their schedules, et cetera. The only piece of information I feel like that was offered at that meeting that identified a little bit of a hitch in our abilities to not serve the students, but our abilities to be as timely as we've been in the past, it was noted by Principal Kellerman that our advising staff, this is just not going to stay connected, so I'll hold it, is a little more behind, or a little behind, in adjusting kind of conflicts of schedule for this year simply because they've been fairly busy working on the redistricting pieces. So they worked a lot on the redistricting pieces before the break, and oftentimes, they have been able to resolve scheduling conflicts by the break time. And in this particular instance, it seems like when they come back in August, that's when they're going to be devoting time toward solving any student schedule conflicts. So that was the only thing that was put out on the table as a possible conflict, if you will. I don't even know that it's a conflict, but it was just a bump in the road that might impact timeliness. Other than that, we had no new arguments. We had really no new evidence. We had really, we had a lot of support from the professional educators, again, that identified that there really were no other bumps in the road as far as moving forward. So as a group, we made some decisions to bring to the board whenever MSBA, I think, finishes looking at it, but we've also had some additional kind of conversations weighing some of the variables.
And we have, we also got more information about what it would look like to achieve that, some new type goals that we could look at as well.
Correct, yes, of course. The criteria. So we've really had a conversation with regard to GPA requirements, and there has been a draft proposal. Nothing has been adopted. It's a draft proposal for our discussion at that particular policy meeting with regard to what are the other criteria that students would need to achieve in order to reach the levels that are proposed in the laude system with regard to AP courses, help me out, Sam, whatever, oh, committees or organizational activities, right, clubs, et cetera. And there are a certain number of events that students need to participate in in each category along with the GPA requirements and AP courses, et cetera.
And the EOC.
And the EOC, yes. So that, it's still up in the air. It was lengthy. Most of our meeting was, again, about that one policy. Everything else seemed to go fairly well, and I think it's going to come to the board for obvious further discussion, but I know, Jean, the last time we had met, you'd also have said, "Can we try to come to a middle ground?" And again, I think we get there, and then additional pieces are brought up, and I feel like we slide backwards a little bit, so. Anything else, Sam?
I don't think so.
So that's a hot button for the policy committee, and I know we still have more stuff coming, and you're just waiting for kind of the onslaught for the fall, I guess.
Wrap this up first.
That'd be good to wrap it up. It's like, third time.
Jamie, have you had anything lately? No? Okay. All right, then that is it for committee reports. Can I get a motion to approve action item by consent, A, B, C, D, and E, which is reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections, financials, warrants for June and July, approval of resignation, leave contract, and employee hires, homebound general education services as well?
So moved?
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five now, 5-0. Student achievement, Hagaman again. You know I was kidding.
Oh, yeah, I know. That's okay. Never wrong.
Okay.
So we get it to him up? You're just going to bring it up, and I'll push it up?
Start.
There it is. Okay, good evening again. I'm here to discuss our dashboard, updated information that we've been compiling. So I provided in the board book our dashboard, if you get a chance to look at. So what I'm going to do is basically just talk about each of those areas, current status, and some things that we're doing to affect those areas, okay? And once again, I'll try to be brief as I can. All right, under English Language Arts, we're trending up overall. One of the big things that we've been doing over the last couple of years is we are focusing on the development of our data structures to support our teachers, which means that's how do they keep their data in a usable format so that when they're sitting down with those students, they're able to have targeted instruction that's current as well as providing the most current feedback for each individual student? And we feel like that's been bearing fruit. We're working to implement Lucy Cockens, which we're very excited about. This provides a common methodology for all classrooms, and we think it's going to have a big impact, too, as our students get older, having that common language and common experiences each and every year, that's going to make a big difference because as kids go from one teacher to the next, they're not going to be hearing things referred to in different language. They're going to be hearing the same consistent language, which we think helps as you get older and you work on much more complex, comprehensive strategies. Another thing is focused District PD. We did that all year, which we felt was helpful and will be helpful in the future. Staff reported that was a very positive experience. And having this Lucy Cockens provided a big impact in what we saw in our students' writing abilities this year, and that's very important. I, as a principal, have never seen kids, even at younger ages, writing as much as we saw them writing last year. There was just a big change in that. And why that's significant is where our students and what we've seen, at least I can speak to Hagaman's data, is that it's in those performance events, which is where they're writing, that we tend to have the most trouble, and that's what holds us back, so that if we can help our students to be much better writers, they're going to be able to express themselves when they're coming up against those prompts. So we're very excited about that, looking forward to continued PD and work in that area. In mathematics, our scores overall are flat. Third and fourth grade has been trending up. Our fifth-grade experience did drop, and as we went back and looked at what was going on with that, we saw a big change in how students were being tested in fractions. And if you ever got a chance to look at it, even I, as adult, have never been asked to solve problems the way they are, using colored charts and crossing fractions. So we looked at that and went, "Okay, this is something our students just haven't experienced before," and there was an awful lot of it in there over the last couple of years. So we're changing how we're exposing our kids to it. The new district assessment that we used last year, those actual opportunities for kids to practice those very items were embedded in the test that our curriculum department developed, so they made that a part of that. We're very excited about Discovery Ed and that training, what that's going to bring that Dr. Plummer's putting in place, because that's going to lead us to some innovative instruction, because another Achilles' heel for us in our math scores are super subgroup kids who have more significant needs, and it is going to help us to further get them more engaged in their learning, and if they're more engaged, then they're going to be doing a better job and they're going to be learning more. We have new materials that we'll be looking at that we think are going to address some of the issues specifically in fifth grade. And another thing I think that's bearing some fruit in the earlier grades, and we're going to add it to our fifth-grade focus, is in our PGP's and our SLOs, so our growth plans and our student learning objectives, is we're focusing on word problems and a four-step process to deal with that. I was real excited about what I saw in our fourth-grade students, saw some independence in their work that I haven't seen before, so we think that's going to bear fruit as we move forward, and all three grades will be focusing on that, so we think that's going to make a difference. In science, we saw a significant drop last year. When we sit and looked at that, one of the things we talked about was with the focus on math and com arts is that we saw a reduction in hands-on, which you know with what we're doing here, and our focus now in the district is much more creative and innovative methods, is if we're taking away the hands-on stuff, we're doing exactly the opposite of what we need to be doing and not drilling so much on information. So we're increasing the number of experiments, innovative methods, and then we're also looking just to make sure we're doing enough hands-on stuff so that it sticks, and we think that's going to make a big difference on the test. Because once again, when we looked at it, it was those performance events and utilizing that data or utilizing information that caused those scores to drop. And then we went back just to make sure the entire building is, are we fulfilling our minutes, and we saw that we were doing a pretty good job of that, so that even though they're not graded, those levels that are teaching science were getting all of that in. In reading, our first grade is meeting the goal of 80% or better. Our third grade is near that goal, and our fifth grade is not there, and we made some changes to address this area of opportunity. All right? We think, one, that the positive movement in reading will help with our third-grade reading scores, so that's in there, our Lucy Cockens and our year-long PD. But in our fifth grade, once again, I think going back to math, because that's a math goal, is it's making sure we're addressing those word problems correctly and have a process for our kids, and I think that'll help when fifth grade goes after that, and continue to help with them how to tackle those fraction problems. So we think that's going to help bring that up, and then it should also make a difference because in science, they're working, some of their experiments are in fractions, so when they're trying to deal with that, if they don't have the math abilities, it's going to hurt them on those science. Discipline, so you go back and look at that, and there's an anomaly in one of those years. You'll look, we went from roughly 200 overall events that come to the office for a couple of years, and then we dipped down to 41. So I've been working with the gentleman in SIS because we still can't figure out why that's low. I think it's way too low. This year, I went back in, and it still wasn't where it needed to be. For '16, '17, we were back at that 228, roughly total incidences in the office. Now, when we do that this year, we're up slightly, but this group, CI3T, we work to make sure that if students are coming to the office for any reason, we wanted that noted in our SIS, because now we've developed processes to go back and look at and say, "What are those areas?" When they're coming to the office, why are they coming to the office? Are there patterns? Are there things we need to address? So we got that in there, and it gives us a lot more detailed information, so as a building, we can put in either all-building strategies, or is it in an area of the building that we need to focus on, or even dial down to a particular classroom or a student. So it gives us the ability to do all of that, and these folks back here, like I said, were the ones that were instrumental in getting us to that type of data, so we look forward to going after that this year. Student engagement was basically flat. We were down a little bit less than one-half of 1% in our average attendance, and then we were down nine, one-hundredths of a percent in our 90/90. And just going back early and looking at some of those numbers, I had a couple of students that were in the hospital for a significant amount of time, and when you have 300 kids and you can't drop those students out, it's not like they moved and you can go back and clean those numbers out. It doesn't take very much to drop some of those numbers. One of the things that we did notice that I don't have on here was looking back, number of students arriving late to school, we reduced last year, and we just did two simple things is, as they pulled up, instead of coming in and expecting them to come in, I stayed outside and harassed them and made them get out of their cars, which sounds horrible, to go sign their kids in. And they'd look at me, and they'd go, "Oh." But after a while, it's like, okay, we know the guy's going to stand out there and make us walk in, so that impacted that. So we'll continue to look at that data, calling families when kids are absent, obviously beyond the 90/90, they get below 90% attendance rate, and working with those families to make sure that those kids are getting to school. Are there any questions I can answer for any of you? Sure.
I'm just curious, your numbers are going to change relative to the redistricting piece, right? Because I know Bus 78 is now no longer going to be a trout wine. My youngest son was traumatized by all his friends. Bus 78 is gone, Mom. So do you have any kind of a read, I guess pun intended, on their experience relative to the Lucy Cockens piece as they come into Hagaman? Are they, are your students going to be coming in with experience with that already, or is it going to be brand-new?
Absolutely no. What's nice is, is since we've gone to that district-wide methodology, is those kids will come in with the exact same language at Trout Wine that we're using here at Hagaman, and that's really going to be nice, is that instead of having to reorient them to all of that, is they're going to have that, okay, we're coming in, and when they're talking about reading, we're understanding what they're talking about from the get-go, so I think that is going to make a big difference.
So because all of our teachers were on that same professional development schedule, all the students are exposed at the same time, so we're not going to have an inconsistent approach to implementing that new method?
Absolutely, you know, and as we were supporting teachers during the professional development sessions that we had last year, you know, we didn't do it by building. We brought teachers and mixed teachers from all the buildings, so all first-grade teachers were together, all second-grade teachers, and then even within that, we didn't allow the teachers in the building to stay together. We had them work with all the different buildings. So that helped to promote everybody developing the same language, the same methods, which we think is going to bear fruit as our students, A, move about this year, but any time within the district. If I go from Oakville and move, and now I'm at Rogers or I'm at Hagaman, when I show up in the area of reading, which is very important, if we can't read, we can't do the rest of it, they're going to have that same common language. I think it'd be very beneficial.
I just, no, it's all good. I have one more. Just one other question. When you're talking about discipline, do you see any correlation with the ESP program and increased discipline in your building, or do those students generally not come to the principal's office when there might be some kind of a conflict or situation?
With the ESP program, they can still come up to see me. A lot of times, I go down there, and I'm more of an intervention, and then if there would be a problem or some discipline action would need to be taken, then I collaborate with that building principal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it doesn't necessarily impact your numbers because it's not the student's home school?
No, it doesn't.
Well, it may not be the student's home school. It very well might be, but, okay.
Correct.
Just curious how that worked.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, when you talked about the science and the reduction in hands-on lessons for that testing year where the scores all went down, and I'm almost afraid to hear the, is class size any, have any relationship to that?
Not that I saw. What I observed happening when going to the classrooms, because they were very concerned about it, they're like, "You know what? You're always coming in to watch us with our reading because we do a lot of help there, watching me collect my data, watch me, you know, as I'm working and trying to learn these new strategies, which have been going on in reading now for quite some time, and then in mathematics, because that became an Achilles' heel for us, that I wasn't necessarily walking in all the time in science, and it was just, you know what? I think it was that effort to kind of drill down and go, "We have really got to get to these facts. We've really got to get to this," which was the opposite direction of what we needed to go. We thought we were being more rigorous, but when you're being more rigorous, that doesn't necessarily equate to better learning. You know, what we're learning, and with Dr. Gaines, is no, it's those innovative, it's those hands-on, it's those engage directly in and problem-solving that allows it to stick with you. The other times, it's more of a memorization, and you can't memorize it all. So while we thought we may have been doing something that was going to be more beneficial, what we figured out is what is causing this? It's the same curriculum. We're talking about the same stuff, and we feel like we're pushing them harder than ever. Why is it still going down?
And so do you feel like, with the changes that you have already got in place, that by this year's benchmark testing, we should be able to see some improvement?
Yeah, we're hoping to see some improvement, and obviously, we have to work to get better at that in terms of being innovative in your structures. That's something that you learn just like anything else, and they'll continue to get better at it. So we think, yes, we're going to bounce back, and we'll see that trend start to move in another direction.
Hopefully sooner than later.
Yes, absolutely. I would agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How do you guys like the Lucy Cockens? And the guided reading as far as, I mean, how, with, obviously, it looks like the scores are kind of going up in that area. Do you think that has to do with the program itself, or?
Yeah, I believe that that's one of the factors, absolutely, is that common language, that common experience. Now, when the teachers are learning something new, they like to be good at what they're doing, so you get in that comfort zone of, "Wait a minute. This way, I felt like I knew exactly what I was doing and how I was doing it, and now you're telling me you're going to walk in 10 times this year and watch me, and I'm learning how to do this." So that creates stress, and that creates angst, but overall, based on especially like the writing performance that we were seeing, I think there's a lot of excitement. And then this year, as they implement some additional strategies of the Lucy Cockens series, I think what you'll see then is a little bit of angst, once again, walking in, but as we learn that and we get better at that, I'm really excited to see where we're going to continue to be as we get proficient at implementing her strategies. So I think long-term, it's going to make a big difference for us.
I'm looking forward to see, my daughter, one of them, came with me tonight, and she'll be a first grader, but the difference between Melina, my soon-to-be second grader, them going through kindergarten and first grade, and Lucy Cockens being implemented when she started kindergarten was a world of difference to watch, so I have to give credit to the teachers because even if they didn't feel comfortable with it, they did an excellent job of implementing it in the classroom and doing what they do. So I was very excited to see that, so I'm looking even more forward to seeing that expand further, but also taking that guiding piece and putting that into our math to see how well that plays out.
The math training that we've got coming, and I was lucky enough to sit all day and listen to the folks and the programming that they had for us, and I was like, "Oh, this is incredible." So our teachers that are going to that are very excited, and I think next year, that will be a learning year for them. But, you know, it's just like what I saw with Lucy Cockens and even other things. When teachers go somewhere and somebody brings something back, that they're like, "Oh, my gosh, I see that working in your classroom." Well, then they want a piece of that right away.
Right. Right.
So it'll be not to overwhelm our folks getting trained, but to still have them comfortable with sharing that out as best as they can to continue to move forward. So we're really excited about the discovery and where that's taken us.
Good, wonderful. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, very much.
All right, you all have a good evening, thank you.
Great information.
Okay.
Kevin's gotta be sorry he missed that.
I know, he can watch it.
Okay, moving on to the strategic plan.
So, as we think about our plan, we'll think about kind of the year that we just finished two, as we wrapped up. So, we were over in the office over there, big grid on the wall, will be knocked out right here.
It is on mute though. So these are all the things that we said we were gonna be doing in the area of staff development funded by Prop R. And he knocked out all of those things. The IIA, which is the Structural Innovation Academy, that's actually a three-year piece. And the incubator is a one-year piece that we did in cooperation with Fox. In the, around finance, we had Prop R and Prop A revenues kind of rolling out, beginning notion of three-year budget. With Prop R, we added a whole bunch of stuff kind of back, and then we had put three cents into capital as well. And we spent those capital funds in a number of ways, beginning to knock out projects across the district, and beginning to try to not necessarily catch up, but not fall further behind in those. And then a whole bunch of other things as well. St. John, we expanded summer school in summer of 16, which was doubles of summer of 15, and expanded, began to expand a few opportunities. During the year, we also did redistricting, we had board listening sessions, and knocked out a number of pieces. And then, if we look at that grid over the next several years, that's actually in your packet. It's too small to put up here, so I'm not gonna do that. But, I mean, we've really got things, kind of the schedule laid out for quite a while. It begins to get a little less detailed further out into the future, but we've done a pretty good job so far of staying self-disciplined and staying on the path that we laid out. So then, looking at the current year, or the year that we're about to start, and what people have said tonight, is in a freakishly short amount of time before school starts. In the area of staff development, we're really continuing the work that we started last year with Prop R, except we've got the elementary split into cohorts. So Cohort 2 will start with continuous classroom improvement training just here in a couple of weeks. In terms of finance, we've added the positions for Mosaic and Technology there. We gave step increase for folks, and we added some funds to pay conservative salaries. And June 29th, we talked about, you know, could we pay off the DNR and the bus lease, which would allow us some freedom to do some stuff. That piece is also in, on the eBoard. We can pay off the DNR loan early. There will be a savings, it'll be minimal, but we can do that. The bus lease, the last, unless we heard from them late today, we still don't know on the bus lease. And we're putting the three cents in the capital again. In terms of capital funds, which most of these projects happen in the summer, we're knocking those out pretty well. The Keelis locker replacement is done, except for final testing. The Mosaic renovations, including the kitchen, the kitchen is moving really, really well, faster than I think we thought that would be. The other pieces, the stuff is opened up. We just got some cubbies and things that we're building to get in there and get ready. The turf and track, that's all done, and it's open, we open it to the public this week, except we really don't want people on it on the weekends. The Berkeley HVAC, that place looks awful if you walk over there. However, the top floor is done, and the other two floors, that, the work completion is further along than it looks like. There's just, it's just a mess. But that one is actually moving along nicely. And part of that is, they're working six, 10-hour days to get that done, so that we're done by the time of start of school. Gym A floor's moving along nicely, and the roof pieces are moving along nicely. Beasley's all done, except for some little bitty finish work, and point should be done next week as well. In terms of kind of innovative and other things that we've kind of got, it's really all around the notion of expanding opportunities for students, and allowing a little bit more student choice in some regards. We'll be in Phase 1 of the high school attendant, or schedule change, and then we've got the new attendance boundaries for the schools as well. So really, 16, 17 was kind of the engagement around big questions, so that we can make some decisions. And the year that we're about to enter is really about implementation and refinement around those areas. However, we do have some things that we're kind of working on in the, in the background that aren't real big pieces necessarily. So really, we're working on aligning and integrating systems across the district, and improve and get those better. We're gonna revamp our teacher and support staff of the year process, and we've got a committee that's gonna be working on that pretty soon. We're gonna begin work on building a leadership development program, and not an administrator wannabe program, but recognizing that leadership occurs in all areas of all job responsibilities. So we have, you know, leaders in food service, and custodial, and kind of all of those. So we're looking at doing that. We are working on a profile of a graduate. We've got that group together. They're gonna start meeting here in the fall, and they'll have a presentation at the December board meeting. And then tonight, and the way we've changed up the school presentations of doing a recognition piece, and then data around that building will be new for the year. So that's pretty much it in the area of strategic plan. Just stick into the plan and having the self-discipline and willpower to do so.
I think we'll be okay with nobody wanting any more changes, major changes. I think we did good this past year. So to implement everything that-
That has changed will be good. And I look forward to seeing how all that starts flowing together and working. Anybody have any questions? No?
No, just glad that you're behind us.
Yeah, now we just get to, we get to hear about the growth that comes from the implementation and
Yes.
initiated initiatives that were put in place last year.
Okay. All right, we will move on to policy revisions.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We have four policies in front of you to get approved tonight by the board. The policy committee worked on them diligently last few times, but we finally have four of them for you. Hopefully, more in the next board meeting. I can kind of go through these real quickly. If you have any questions, stop me during the way, along the way there. GDB, I'm sorry, GDBDA and GCBDA are both real similar. GC policy, there are two changes in that, and that came out of the MOU negotiations this year. And that was to remove the restricted Fridays at the end of the year, and it was also to change the language from perfect attendance. Instead of being awarded a leave day, you'll get $100 at the end of the year for teachers. On GDBDA, which is for support staff, the restricted Fridays were also removed too, so we have consistency with both sections of our employees.
And the monetary piece is not-
That's still being looked into.
Relevant for this particular policy at this point in time.
Yes, ma'am, correct. Any questions on those two?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. GBEA, which was, actually, a very observant board member brought this to our attention, with Workman's Comp, there was a typo in the language under temporary and partial disability. We checked with MSBA, and MSBA agreed and said, yes, and we will correct it. So they did. Wasn't much discussion over it. Was it on that? And then IKF, graduation requirements, that was all language recommended by MSBA. And that was adding American civics to the OC language, I believe. Point 5 and point 6 have taken all required end-of-course exams. Point 6 is, have received a 30 minutes of CPR. That came up during conversation in our last meeting, and we believe that's gonna be integrated into our health classes. That's it.
I think it's important to note, too, at the policy meeting, there was discussion about why are these pieces being, you know, implemented into the policy, and they're now requirements
Yes, ma'am.
for us as a district, so.
Yep.
Yeah, stay long.
If a kid is already certified with CPR, whatever, and they have already, or let's say hypothetically, they're not certified, but they've already done their health class, is this-
We would make sure they're trained.
Is that what?
We would make sure they go through that, yes.
And then what, but what if a kid has their CPR training, I guess you could-
They show that certification?
-card, they could prove it.
I don't know.
Just, I was just thinking, because like, my daughter's already done health, but she's-
Got it over the summer or something.
-certified through Explorers, you know, so, anyway, just a thought.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
That is.
I make a motion to approve the changes to policies GBEA, policy GCBDA, policy GDBDA, and policy IKF.
Second by Jamie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Charter revisions.
So we've got revisions to the five board-appointed, or the board-chartered committees. Two of those are in the policy and insurance committees. There's clarifying language that came out of negotiations. So that language before had a member selected by the organization. Now that is a member appointed by whomever is the Melville NEA president. And then the other piece across all of the charters was to kind of get at the heart of people who are holding positions on the committees but don't show up, or aren't going to engage. So a way to get those folks off those committees, and so that we can fill those seats, so that we have full committee participation.
I know at one point, we had talked about limiting how long you could serve on a committee.
We, we did, and we just didn't get language together enough.
Okay.
Because then, when does that clock, when does that clock start
Right.
ticking? And then, you know, is that, what are, what are the lengths of terms? Is it, you know, is it a one-year term that you serve six times, a two-year term that you serve three times, or a
Right.
three-year term that you serve twice, or, you know, just using six as the example. So I just don't think we've come to good language on that piece yet. But we, we definitely needed to do the insurance and policy, and then with the meeting attendance, we just put that in all of them as well.
Right, okay. So is that something we'll still kind of look at going forward?
Yeah, it's still in our minds.
Okay, good. I think that's important to have that rotated around. Okay, can I get a motion? Do we need to do anything with that one?
Yep, yep.
Now, is it at the bottom? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the new wording? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Change in the board meeting. So August 17th is our next meeting, and we were looking to see if it was possible to move it up to the 10th.
I would like that better.
You like that better? Okay.
I had to leave Justice City early on the 17th to be back here.
Okay.
Which letter for me?
Okay. I know Kevin can't be here, but he said he can call in that night.
I can't be here.
You can't be here.
I don't know if I can call in, but I will try.
Okay. Do we know about Larry? Just to get another meeting in, our meeting in before, that way, if we do policy like IKC, then we can get everything set before school physically starts.
It was worth 16th, so.
Starts on the 16th, school starts.
Do you have a reason as to anything?
Okay. Can you call in or not?
I'll, sure. I'm not positive at this point.
Okay.
Do we know about Larry?
I can't remember what he said.
I don't remember. You want me to get him real quick? I'll text him real quick.
I got it. Okay. Well, I think, we'd still have a quorum to move it up, and then have people call in. So I, at this point, do you guys wanna go ahead and move the meeting to the 10th?
I don't care.
So I'll take the motion to move the meeting to August 17th, to August 10th.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1. All right. We have one person signed up for patron comments, that's Sandy.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sandy Reger, as some of you know, and my daughter Jessica is part of the Oakville High School Class of 2018. Jessica would be here speaking too, if she could, but she is at a mandated camp out of town with one of her Oakville High School activities. I'm here to ask you not to delay the implementation of the Kum-Lah-Dai system. I speak not just for Jessica, but for the silent majority, who are not even aware of the jeopardy they are in, and the harm being done to them by the class rank system. This is not about who can make the most noise. I work full-time and do not have time to go on social media. It is about doing what is right for the students of the entire district, not what the top four students want. If Jessica could be here and speak, I assure you, she would be equally compelling as the other students have been, and indeed, heart-wrenching, while asking you not to delay the Kum-Lah-Dai system and strip her of an $18,000 and potentially $26,000 scholarship that she qualifies for under the equal playing field of the Kum-Lah-Dai system. However, despite having a 30 on her ACT and a 4.226 GPA, the flaws in the class rank system result in even this high of a GPA not being in the top 5% of class rank, it means she does not meet scholarship criteria from Mizzou. But this is just one example. This issue is not about what is best for one student versus the other. It is about what is best for all, and is what is, and it is about the facts. The primary concern seems to be that the Kum-Lah-Dai system will disadvantage students in the admissions process for Ivy League schools. That is not true at all. Yesterday, I spoke personally with admission reps from Harvard, Wash U, and Vanderbilt, choosing two highly prestigious schools in the region, and Harvard because they're Harvard, and because they are the pinnacle of a rigorous admissions criteria. Every school stated without exception that students from non-ranking schools are not disadvantaged in any way in the admissions process, that they look at the students holistically with their individual test scores, GPA, courses taken, activities, community service, leadership, et cetera, and not having a class rank provided has no bearing. They also all said they would accept a letter from the school with class rank from a non-ranking school at the student- accept a letter from the school with class rank from a non-ranking school if the students still felt compelled to provide it anyway. Vanderbilt, in fact, said that less than half of their admitting schools are even ranking anymore. I have emails from all these schools confirmed, and confirming this and writing, and will provide this to you. An opinion was voiced that Mizzou is the only school that uses a certain class rank for scholarship criteria. No one can know that, but even if it were the case, more students in our district apply to Mizzou than any other single school. That should be another reason not to delay. There are 700 students in the Class of 2018. Many of them could be harmed by this delay. Implementation now hurts no one. Implement now as planned. No, there should be no impact to schedules unless you delay and cause the students to drop out of meaningful classes like CAPS and take less meaningful classes just because they're weighted. You can still report your class rank if you want. Problem solved. Give the amazing top students at each school the honor of being class valedictorian and salutatorum. No harm is done. Many are helped, and that's what's best for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay. That is the end of our meeting.
Yay!
I know.
I make a motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, we're done.
Thank you all for coming. I
I know.